And we are recording.
All right. Let's get started again. The time is six o'clock. This is the Swamaco Village Board meeting for Monday, May 5th, 2025. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. Just a reminder, anyone here who is here and comes forward to speak, please provide your name and address prior to letting us know what's on your mind, as this is a public record. At this time, I would like to look for a motion to approve the evening's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the evening's agenda? Is that from Trustee Romas?
Yep.
Thank you. You have a motion from Trustee Romas to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Trustee Neto this evening. Any other questions or discussion on this item? Approval of the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. This motion carries the approval of the agenda seven zero. Let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay, public appearances. So at this time, anyone in the audience who is here to speak to an item that is not on the agenda, emphasize not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to come forward. Again, provide your name and address into the microphone. Tell us what's on your mind. Be aware that not being on the agenda, no action can be taken on this item this evening. However, the item could be referred back to staff for, as a future agenda item and for further investigation. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak to an item not on the agenda? Very well, seeing no one, we will move on. Item number six this evening is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of all previous minutes of the village board meeting dated April 21st, 2025. Are there questions or discussion on the consent agenda this evening?
Page two of the minutes on eight A, the motion was made and it doesn't say for what. Probably should say what that's for. That I believe, Lineville.
It says a motion was made by President Van Rossum, seconded by Trustee Stevens to approve Resolution 25008, authorizing the borrowing of not to exceed. Oh, I see what you're saying. You're saying it doesn't-
It doesn't say what it's for.
It doesn't-
It just says we're borrowing.
Approval for dollars.
Yeah.
Good point.
Well, with the resolution number, it does.
Yeah, but-
Have to look into the resolution number.
Yeah, but-
Can we just add a note to these?
I typically go with what your actual words are for the motions.
Okay.
But I can add a note if you'd like, that the Resolution 25008, what it was for.
For, yeah, like Lineville.
I mean, you can always reference that, but-
For Lineville reconstruction.
Yeah, just a note to reference.
Thank you.
I can do that, yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other items? Anyone else? No? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition per Trustee Eckert?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
With changes.
Trustee Eckert has offered a motion to approve with the change as stated, and that has been seconded by Trustee Romas. Any other further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. The motion carries seven to zero. Administrative items number seven, 2025-2030 Assessor Contract. Assessor Deener.
So I sent the proposed contract to Michelle a few weeks ago. For everyone to look over. If anyone has questions, I can answer anything you have.
Is it standard to what other villages are paying?
We have, you know, we do a lot in Brown County and part of putting new contracts together is we try to stay consistent with something that's similar. I, based on what we do, I look at a village like Bellevue and Ledgeview being pretty similar to Swamaco. And with the part per parcel count, I feel that if anything, Swamaco is probably a little bit lighter, the per parcel price compared to them two yet. But it is, it is something we definitely look at, but along with any, any of the new contracts, you know, we look at how much growth is taking part in the municipality over the last few years from the, from the previous contract. That's a big thing too.
How did you come up with your CPI number?
Well, online. Yeah, I know it's, uh, cost of living obviously is quite a bit different probably now than three years ago. But the, you know, that we really don't have any other way to do it than just research it based on what, based on what's online.
I mean, there's fluctuation and, you know, when you think about three years ago, you know, it's not even three years ago, two years ago, the Consumer Price Index indicated that the cost of living increase was somewhere around eight percent.
Yeah, it was much higher, yeah.
Much higher. So standard, standard year over year is anywhere between 2.5 and 3.5 percent. 3.2 seems a reasonable number. I just wanted to see-
Yeah, I, I don't want to be too high looking into the future. I mean, how can we know that it's going to be three years from now as high as it was five years ago? But, uh, you know, we, we usually look at, you know, the, the normal two and a half to three percent. I think in most of our contracts is what we've been looking at. I know we might have hit it a little bit harder with the first year of this contract, knowing what we just came out of, because the last contract would have been five years ago before, you know, right before COVID and everything changed quite a bit. So going forward, we're not going to anticipate, because we know it's already down now compared to a couple of years ago.
Thank you. Other questions for Assessor Deener? So we would be looking for proposed action on this evening, consideration for approval or denial of the July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2030 Fair Market Assessment, Assessments Incorporated contract, as the village board wishes. Is there a motion preferred on this? Or other questions? Am I rushing this for anybody?
I think I'm pretty comfortable with that, that seven thousand increase over now that many years, so. I'll make a motion.
Please.
That we approve the contract that's dated July 1st of 2025 through June 30th, 2023, Fair Market Assessments, Inc.
So we have a motion, we have a motion from Trustee Romas to approve the contract with Fair Market Assessments, Inc., as stated. Is there a second?
I'll psych a pep.
Thank you. We have a second from Trustee Stevens on this item as well. Any other further questions or discussion? Trustee Eckert, something, anything?
No, no. No.
Okay. So no additional questions, no additional discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Absolutely. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Neto.
Aye.
Trustee McKeefry.
Aye.
Trustee Romas.
Aye.
Trustee Stevens.
Aye.
President Van Rossum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Thank you.
All right. I thank you. I appreciate it. I do have two contracts if we want to sign them right away and then the village keeps one copy and I get the other. Sure. Alex, we get your signature on this too. He's a good salesman. He doesn't leave out here without a check. Alex? Give it to him in Bitcoin. Thank you. Next year, this, or five years from now, that'll cost 3.2 percent more. All right, very good. Thank you. Have a good evening.
We'll be in touch.
Okay, let's move along. Item number eight this evening. Item number eight this evening is a planning and zoning item. It is the preliminary plat of the Shidi Farms Fourth Edition. Zoning Administrator Dunks.
Thank you. We're looking at about 75 acres here, and it is taken up of two larger parcels and four parcels from Shidi Farms Three, I believe. Was the one that it came out of, just rearranging some property lines with that. Currently is zoned rural residential with some ag and rural residential around it, along with the public lands and institutions. The preliminary plat proposes 56 buildable lots and one outlot. This is expected to be a phased development, but due to the stormwater concerns, the entire site is being proposed for the preliminary plat. Stormwater is the largest concern from a staff perspective. The outlot would, is likely not going to be able to use for stormwater, but that's really a Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources decision. The crossing under Anston Road at that outlot was at about capacity this spring without any additional loads being placed on it. We have the infiltration basins in the Shidi Farm Second Edition that actually failed this spring and are currently being repaired and upgraded. Staff would expect to lose a lot or two as that, this stormwater plan develops. Public Works Utility has made a recommendation that wet ponds be used rather than infiltration basin. And the developer or the surveyor engineering firm has been alerted to that. The driveway access to Anston Road was also a concern, and staff is asking for no driveway access on Anston Road for the lots 71 through 76. That's the portion going up the hill, everything east of the road coming out to Anston Road on this plat. The road access of Anston Road on the western side of the plat is far enough down the hill as to not present any vision concerns. Planning Commission did have some concerns with that. They did make up a recommendation that it go to Public Health and Safety. We've had both our Public Works Director and our Head DEO take a look at it. They both believe that it, it meets all the safety requirements. It's up to you whether you want to send it to Public Works or Public Health and Safety, but those are your two staff members that are going to make that staff report and recommendation to that board. We would expect a positive motion out of them that, that it is safe. I don't think we have anybody on there that's going to be better trained at it than those two individuals. I wouldn't expect any pushback. We have unplanted lands along Anston Road. Up at the top of the hill there are being sold to an adjacent property owner. That, that sale will take place before the plat is recorded. This area is not served by sewer or water, and there are not plans considering it any time in the near future. All lots do appear to meet code requirements. We will need a developer's agreement for the construction of the road and any stormwater construction, and administrative fees of $200 per lot would be required at signing of the final plat. Your Planning Commission motion was to recommend approval with six conditions. The stormwater management plan, developer's agreement, payment of the administrative fees, a note on the face of the plat, no driveway access to Anston Road for lots 71 through 76, meeting all other requirements, and then the review by the Public Health and Safety. Thank you.
All right. Are there questions for Zoning Administrator Dunks on this item?
Well, this is fine, but I, I am concerned going forward about the stormwater, but that's a whole separate plan.
As we all are.
That stormwater plan's got to be approved by Brown County, right?
No, the stormwater gets approved by the village of Swamaco.
Village of Swamaco, okay.
To state code requirements.
Okay.
Or whatever is more restrictive on our end.
So who reviews that stormwater plan for the village? Public Works Director?
Does Ayers?
No, we have a consultant review it as well. So we review it as staff, and then we also have a consultant.
Okay.
Just to make sure everything checks out appropriately.
Okay. Other questions, concerns? Let's see. Is there a motion? Is there anyone? Sometimes there's folks in the audience who want to speak to this. Can we get a motion to open this up for public comment? Or do I need that?
You can just open it as the chair. You're powerful.
Sometimes it doesn't feel that way. Most of the time it doesn't. I have six people who constantly tell me I'm not powerful. If anyone would like to speak to this item, please come forward. Provide your name and address and let us know what's on your mind.
Is that us? Are we the six?
Keep me, keep me in check. Yeah, there's, there's three who keep me in check there.
My name's Merlin Culbertance, 3686 Anston Road. I'm directly across from the field that's being developed. I ask, the way I understand, is there going to be an entrance to this development onto Anston Road?
Yes.
Yes.
Why? Everything is against it. You're going downhill. And this road from this development is a flat road, but they're going to have to go uphill. This is winter time. That road gets slippery. I lived there for 47 years. And I can't believe they're going to let that road slide in there like that. It's a definite safety hazard. In any, it just don't make sense. The road is only 22 feet wide. I measured it. And it's taken more and more traffic because of the development in Anston. That place is, is booming. I don't know how many people they employ, but when there's a shift change, there's a lot of traffic on Anston Road. Anston Road is a very narrow road. It has next to no shoulder, right straight to the ditch. And it's been used a lot by bicyclists, because in, especially in the summer when school's out, all these kids go to Mountain Bay Trail and they get on the Mountain Bay Trail at Anston. And that road is narrow, and now they want to stick a road in there, and 56 lots would be over 100 vehicles on this road capable of, if everybody has two vehicles per lot. It's just insane. It's just a safety issue. I, I just can't believe they'd approve that.
And there is a second exit out of this plat heading south on Evelyn Rose that comes out to West Line Road, just to the south of this plat. So there are two exits out of here.
You know, in terms of the, in terms of the safety issue on this, so, you know, the recommendation from Planning and Zoning was to have Public Health and Safety look at the safety issue per your recommendation. And that was actually redirected to Public Works and the direct enforcement officer representing the Sheriff's Department and the safety piece of it. Those are two, two safety experts with regard to these roads. A lot of times what we find when we're trying to, you know, manage village issues like this is we're faced with a situation where we have to make a decision based on, on rules and regulations. And if we don't, you're here today saying, this is crazy, this is insane, this is, makes no sense at all, and you gave all of the reasons that you, you felt that this didn't make any sense whatsoever. There could be other individuals who would come forward and say, well, what are you talking about? This is unsafe. You've had it reviewed by your direct enforcement officer who represents the Sheriff's Department. Assumably he's looked at the number of accidents. Assumably he's looking at, Public Works is, and not assumably, I know you have. You've looked at the yardage, you've looked at the trajectories. So all of this science has gone into this. So it places us in a difficult position. If we were to rule against this based on what we believe or what is being shared as a safety issue, what are the facts and data that we are making that decision on? And we could be called to task as a village for making a decision not based in, in science and facts and data. So we're faced with a difficult situation. You've lived there 46 years. You have experience there. You've lived there, you've seen 46 years of ice storms and slippery roads and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And there's good experience there. And your experience and what you brought forward was the impetus for us to refer this back to Public Health and Safety and have another second look at it. So now, after a first look, a second look, and now a third look at this, it's still coming back and saying that, you know, the, the, this, it meets all of the requirements of, of, of health and safety and these experts. So what I find myself, and I'm not speaking for anybody else on this board, I would never do that. What I find myself wrestling with is how do I make the decision that this is a safety issue without considering the facts and data that are presented by the expert? How do I, how do I balance your 46 years of experience with the facts and data that are presented by these other individuals to come to the right decision?
I don't know how they can come up with a decision. See, this development is as flat as this table right here, the road that enters, enters road. Now, you're entering Anston Road, right away you go up. Bang. That ain't right. You know, it gets slippery down there. And now you're on a flat road, you're going to have to go up right away. Now, if you're coming down in the wintertime, now you got to hit that road. Now, I live on the side of the road, on the side of the hill. It's not unusual in the wintertime, especially like this winter would happen. Wet, pecky snow, and it freezes fast at night. I literally stopped at the top of the hill and creeped down, and if she starts slipping, I just fit to get about trying to get in the driveway. I just got to go down the hill, turn around, come back. That's the stuff I deal with, and that's what you're going to run into.
I'm just wondering, question for Andy. As roads get busier, like my road is Harbor Lights, that one's pretty busy. Do you tend to clear them better or salt them more with the higher travel roads?
Uh, we, we have our mains set up, which Anston Road is a main, so we, anytime that we're out plowing or salting, Anston's one of the first roads to be hit. It's a main on that route, and, you know, it'll be taken care of as soon as we can. So it doesn't necessarily matter on ADT or traffic volume. Obviously, yes, we hit our, our busier roads sooner than later when we're called out, but, uh, you know, Anston Road's one of our mains, so it would be done within the first, you know, hour, hour and a half of us being out there.
I always tell them to put more salt down.
How do you put salt this thick on a road?
It's salt.
What is it when it gets down to the teens?
Yeah, no, you got to get it on time, but-
It gets so thick, I really, I don't want all that salt in my driveway. I have to actually shovel it off the road just so it don't come into my driveway. They, they just pour it on there.
Now, Evelyn Rose at some point comes out on West Line?
Yes.
Okay, so, so some of this will be shared with that, but I, I get your concern.
And the, the plan is the, the most eastern cul-de-sac with the road heading to the south out of that where it dead ends right now would be for that road at some point when a different property owner develops that, I think it's a 20, maybe it's even a 40 down there too, is going to come out to West Point Road, so. We do have provisions for one more exit from this plat at some time in the future. But again-
Can you just help me understand where that Evelyn Rose outline, oh, to West Line where that would go, or Alex, can you point it on the?
Eight.
Took your map away.
No, why eight? Isn't all this traffic being shoved to West, or West Line Road? There it's wide open. You can see easy. It's a flat road. Everything there. Makes no sense. I mean, there's not a tree to be seen close to a half mile outside the road. It's that open. And they push it on Anston Road, which is overcrowding, narrow, used by bicyclists. There's not room for two cars meet each other, and there's no room for a bicyclist. There's just no room.
I'd say too, we prefer to have connectivity through a development and having multiple ways in and out of that development, you know, which this does create. Especially having one way in, you only have one access if something were to happen. For, you know, fire EMS, for Public Works to get in there if we need to for any emergency, you know, only having one, one entrance. You know, we prefer to have connectivity and through streets through all of our developments. So, you know, we believe that this road coming out to Anston makes, makes complete sense. You know, it's, it's like six or 700 feet from that road to the top of the hill or the crest of the hill, which I'm not disagreeing with you that wintertime can be challenging and all the above, you know, but people shouldn't, will get used to having to make that left-hand turn if they're heading home that way. And they'll get used to conditions. You know, we have hills and curves and turns all over this village with intersections much closer than this one, and, you know-
But how are you going to deal with the traffic on Anston Road? It's narrow, 22 feet wide.
Well, it's the same width as like 95% of all village streets are all 22 feet wide, so. You know, someday if ADT warrants it, you know, we could potentially rebuild Anston Road to a little bit wider, which we have done to some of our bigger, heavier used roads here in the village.
But there's no shoulder, I should say, this ditch.
Yep.
Oh, you got a lot of bicyclists going down, especially in the summer. How are you going to deal with that?
It's a challenge on all village streets. We don't have much for sidewalk. We don't have trails.
Getting picked off.
We have 22-foot streets all over with a mediocre two and a half to three-foot shoulder, and we still have bicyclists and kids and walkers all over and, you know, up-
Well, and again, it's not unusual. I don't know where these bicyclists come from. But I'm going to say they come from the reforestation camp, and sometimes there's 30, 40 of them at a time. And they go to the Mountain Bay Trail, and I think they go to Plaski or whatever, and they come back. But there's a lot of bicycle traffic, and there's, you've got a road that is narrow. And now you want to shove another 100 vehicles in there?
What's, what's the distance? So if, if I'm traveling on VELP and I'm north of Highway B on VELP after the, after the curve, what's, what's the width of that road?
Uh, I think VELP up there is 24.
24.
So, yeah, I don't even know if it's 24. It might only be 22. I think it's 24 all the way through.
Well, I can tell you this from personal experience, not 46 years of personal experience, but I can tell you this from bike riding, personal experience, riding that stretch of road many, many times.
Anston Road?
No, I'm talking about VELP, which is 20, less than-
Okay.
22, maybe 24 at the most, not much. And that's also a 45 mile an hour road, right? With people whizzing by, and I'm on my bike, and Trustee Eckert rides your bike a lot as well, and might be able to share some experience. It's close, and I, I understand it's close, and we don't have bike lanes. Bike, bike lanes. You know, what's the solution for that? Well, we could certainly put in bike lanes. We could certainly put in trails, but we've chosen not to do that because they're very expensive to maintain. So what that means is two things. On a, on a thin road like this that's being used recreationally by bike riders, Trustee Eckert, myself, others, and by individuals driving their cars, there's a responsibility for both. The bike riders have to be careful and the, the drivers have to be careful.
Would it be easier just to eliminate some of this traffic? I mean, it's 56 lots, that's two vehicles per, per lot, assuming that's 100 and some vehicles you're piling on that road.
Assuming they're all going to go out the one exit onto Anston Road versus the other exit, utilizing the other exit and potentially the third exit as well. I just, I get back to what I originally stated. I don't know how, how to make, I understand what you're saying, and I don't disagree with it. You are the voice of experience, and I respect that. I just don't know how to come up with a decision with the details and, and the information to foster a decision that says, no, you can't exit Anston Road. I, the facts and the data point us in a different direction, and I don't know. I don't know how to reason that. If someone on the board has a better idea for me, I'm more than willing to listen to any other better idea. I just don't have one myself.
Well, I think the 40-plus people, I think that's a club, actually. I think that's a bike club. I'm not on it. They're fast. I'm slow. I, I don't, personally, I don't like bike lanes. I think it confuses people. But I don't know.
What, what is the speed limit on that?
35. Both be 35.
Trustee Romas had a question for you.
They go by it so fast, they can't read it.
What's the elevation change when you look at the plat? We have the curve that heads north- When you look at the plat, we have the curve that heads north up to Anson Road. What's the elevation at the curve and at the point where Anson Road connects?
I don't know off the top of my head. I didn't measure that. We just go based on vision, any vision obstruction and we run it out. And once you get past five hundred feet and you have clear line of sight, it's, there's not, there's no issue. Like I said, you can see like, I think it's almost seven hundred feet from the intersection.
What I'm wondering about is.
Do you have that information, Mr. Beeta?
It's probably in twenty-seven.
Forty feet.
That's the elevation change? Goes up forty feet from the curve. So what I'm asking, so you can't see my pencil. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, so this curve here, from here to Anston Road, what's the elevation change from here to there?
That's pretty flat.
It's flat.
Look at the picture.
I am looking at the picture. And the picture shows, it looks like a decline. And that's why I'm curious. It looks like maybe four feet? It's a foot. Okay. So one of my thoughts is when this plat is built, are we, we're talking about a run of maybe about two hundred or a hundred feet to that curve?
What curve are you, you're trying, in the intersection?
Oh, he's on the intersection.
This curve, so there's a curve right here, right? So from this point to this point, maybe about a hundred feet?
What's?
And a one-foot elevation change?
Two hundred and nine feet.
See, I don't need glasses. Okay, I'm lying.
It's all deep to lots, sir.
Yeah. So two hundred and fifty feet and it's a one-foot elevation change?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
To get a, a feel for that, I mean, that's, that's almost that.
Less than a half percent.
Yeah. And that's kinda going to, I was thinking about that, cause you brought the idea, you know, you start sliding. So where is the sliding?
On Anston Road itself.
Coming westbound on Anston, going west, turning.
Okay, it's actually on the road it goes south.
Now, that picture up there. I believe it's a neighbor's mailbox, very light, about where you, yeah, see that little white part right there? A little bit farther. That's his mailbox. Now, the proposed entrance to Anston Road is right behind that white car in the distance. Am I right or am I wrong?
No.
It's more like the forty-five mile an hour speed limit.
Thirty-five.
Because if that's his mailbox.
But it says forty.
It's been, this is an old area.
Yeah.
We're referencing this.
Two thousand and twelve.
Okay.
Can you show us with the cursor where the proposed entrance is?
I'll have to measure back roughly.
Keep going, keep going.
Hereish?
Hereish? Right where the white car is.
Very scientific.
And that, that change in elevation, what's the slope there of that road?
There's forty feet from that intersection to the top of the hill.
Okay.
It's flat for a good portion before it starts going uphill, but. Six hundred and thirty feet.
Okay. And then if you did slide by, you would just keep on sliding? That's the theory.
So you have six hundred feet before you have to stop at the next intersection, which is flat.
And Officer Pisani had reviewed this and said that the visibility is open, correct?
I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Um, Officer Pisani did review the visibility on, on Anston with relation to the location of the entrance to the new subdivision. And he had determined that it was, there was full visibility. So if we did have, for example, cars going slow because of the icy, you know, weather or whatever, they wouldn't be coming up on a blind spot to potentially a line of traffic waiting to get into that. And that's, it's all open, it's a straight line. Officer Pisani had said that it was full visibility.
I believe that was DEO Pisani along, or was it Officer Pisani or the D? Yes.
Yes, Officer Pisani.
Yep.
And Department of Public Works Director Smiths.
And what they're more looking at is to make sure that if a car's coming over the crest of that hill, you have adequate time to see somebody pulling out and that person pulling out has adequate time to see you. It's more about that than it is about the grade of the hill. It's the distance, which is why we restricted any driveway access between that point going up that hill is to alleviate that safety concern. Cause yes, there are some that are there on both sides of the road that I wouldn't wanna have to pull out of that every day. I sure wouldn't wanna come in there and back in my trailer. I don't know how the one backs in his camper, unless he pulls it in. Cause that road, that traffic comes over the top, that crest, that hill extremely quick and he's at the top. But, but those are old. We can't do anything about that.
Another thing I didn't bring up, now, Anson Road, don't show it. From County Trunk M, as you en, enter on Anston Road, you're going up. Tips off, dips. So when you're, like in my driveway, I gotta stop and just, if you're lucky, you can see just the tips of a, of car coming over the top. You ain't gonna make it. I gotta wait for that car to come down. As you get below the hill, it increases because now you're getting down the hill, now you're looking up, but it dips like this, so they come over the top of the hill, bang, you're going down.
And again, that's why there's no driveway access for those five lots that come out there, cause we don't believe it's safe. The road gives adequate vision both directions. There's no trees interfering with anybody's vision. There's nothing there right now that interferes at all with vision either direction. Any road you put a subdivision plat onto is going to increase the traffic and, and as Mr. Smiths has said, most of our roads are twenty-two feet wide and, and similar shouldering. We don't have wide roads and, and we don't want wide roads and we don't, you know, even, even if you had a two-foot shoulder on there, bicyclists won't go onto that shoulder, cause they don't wanna ride on that gravel, they're gonna dump it and be in front of the car. You know, walkers will, but your bicyclists, they, they just have to share the road. That's, that's the way this community has developed. I personally was out on County M once, up on Flynnville Road with a bike, and I'll never do it again. That's absolutely dangerous. It's insane when those semis and dump trucks come flying by you and you got absolutely no shoulder. But you as, you have to adjust. Anywhere we put this, it's going to be a concern. If we go up to West Line, West Line's the same width. So you haven't solved anything. We've reviewed it for vision. It meets the standards.
Like proposed development, rather enter onto Anston Road, have a cul-de-sac at the end and you all pushed out towards, uh, West Line or West Point. Because most of the people probably are gonna go south heading to Green Bay.
But again, that defeats our purpose of preferring two exits out of every subdivision.
And we gotta have two exits. I, I don't know we're gonna get anywhere with this tonight. We may just be at the point where we have to agree to disagree. Um, I, I don't know that we're gonna get anywhere. Um, I, I asked if anyone had any better ideas on this. I'm not hearing any better ideas.
We, we typically go by facts and data. And we, we have the professionals that have that kind of information, our officer for Brown County and the, um, Public Works Director and everything. And they're going by the, the standards that they have to use and they're saying it's not a safety hazard. That's what we have to go by. And there's not gonna be a hundred vehicles all going out that one way. They're not all gonna go out that way. And if it's winter and they don't like that, they're gonna go out the other way.
Well, years ago, there was a bad accident right in front of the house. Party hit a, a tree in front of me. He got hurt. And all the rescue squads and everything was there. None of them could climb the hill in the winter out of my driveway, including the squad car. And I was right there, positive traction, pulled out. He could not climb that hill. And you can verify this, uh, should be on accident report. Party hit a tree about forty miles an hour right in front of the house, sir. He was injured.
And they can, they can use a different route.
You'd have to go downhill.
They can, they can find a different route to, to get in or out.
Well, that's what I do, but the, the thing is, why not have a cul-de-sac at the end of that, rather enter onto Anson Road, have a cul-de-sac there so that traffic would continue onto West Point or West Line? You got a thorough fair right there.
Now, you would have a hundred cars coming out of one place. So now with the two exits, you got a fifty-fifty chance. And even if you look at this plat.
But they can handle it, there's, there's no hill.
Maybe, maybe there's twenty lots that are gonna go out onto Anston. The rest are gonna go south. So I, I do believe that congestion might be even more on, on, on the other road, West Line Road.
Plus we've got all of the driveway access, correct? Coming out onto West Line. It does seem that half of the subdivision would be utilizing, would be more convenient just by their location within the subdivision, that they would be accessing the West Line exit versus the Anston. You'd be looking at one section in here, is it three, six, no, twelve, fifteen lots would access, maybe more convenient for them to use the Anston exit or entrance.
All right. Is there anybody, is there anybody who, with all due respect, sir, is there anybody who on the board who can give me or can provide us as a board a basis why we need to push this back and look for another option? Other than what's been presented in front of us? All right? Did you have any last comments, sir?
Yes. Where's the detention pond in here?
Stormwater plan has not been developed yet.
It has not been developed, you said?
It has not been, they want the preliminary plat approved before they're gonna spend the money on engineering to develop the stormwater plan. So that's yet to be determined.
Okay, cause it's probably gonna affect that road up there, uh, entering on Anson Road.
It's yet to be determined where they're gonna put us. I would assume, I can't see what lot numbers, I can't see on this one either. I would assume it's gonna probably take up some of lots sixty-eight, sixty, maybe fifty-nine, fifty-eight, somewhere in that area is where I'm assuming you're likely gonna get your retention pond. There's a lot of acreage there that they can spare and still meet the, the requirements, but.
The water will still leave the site in the same fashion that it does right now.
So that can't be changed. We've gone over that.
The grading of the, of the property of the lot, you know, is, shows that it, it will still leave the site underneath that culvert under Anson, just like it does right now. Nothing will change there other than how this, the water's handled on the site to meet our treatment requirements before the water can leave the site.
So as it stands now, the water leaves the site pretty, pretty quickly with all of the.
It just sheet flows right across the fields and goes underneath the culvert.
And sometimes across the road as well.
Yep.
But this would actually put in a retention pond where this water would be held for a period of time and the sediment dropped out. So in some ways, this is a, a better solution than the current solution that you have.
Yes.
So that's a plus.
Cause you're talking tens and thousands of gallons of water. You know? I've already seen Anson Road, Anson Road is like a dam. I've already seen that water back up and go over Anston Road and you could actually take a small boat and a couple of days go out there in that field. That's how much it backs up. And once it, this development starts, water don't run uphill. All that water off these roads, rooftops, driveways, any hard-packed surface, it's all going down.
They all have to, it all has, it cannot leave the site any faster than it leaves the site today. So they have to develop retention areas to handle a hundred-year event?
Up to a hundred-year storm, yes.
So they have to have a, their storm facility onsite to handle that. It may take a couple of ponds, there may be one more up on the top of the hill. They may lose a lot or two. We don't know until they spend the money on the engineering, which they can't do until they have a preliminary plat.
Okay. Does that answer your question on the retention pond?
Yeah, as long as it's taken in consideration, cause right now, there's a culvert right there that handles the water. If you were to stand on that culvert and look to the, to the south, look to the east, look to the west, there's one place you're gonna look. You're gonna look up.
We've got.
Everything is higher.
We've got pictures of what it looked like this spring. We, we know. We know how badly it can back up there. That isn't, may not change because it, it's already leaving the site that quick. They just can't make it worse. It may not correct that and there may not be a way to correct that, cause that backs up all the way from the Swamaco River. Yeah.
All right. Okay. So if there's, if, if, if there is nothing else, I'd like to see if there's anyone else who'd like an opportunity to speak to this, on this issue? Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Stan Kazmerich, thirty-eight, forty-eight, Anston Road. I am a member of the Town of Pittsville Planning and Zoning Committee. I'm also vice chair of Brown County Land and Water Committee. I just want, a couple of things I just wanna share with you here. First of all, an inch of rain on an acre, and you can jot these figures down, is twenty-seven thousand gallons of water. If you get that inch of rain on forty acres, that's over a million gallons of water. This watershed that we're talking for the subdivision is about eighty acres. Water comes from parcel six eighty-seven, six eighty-six, six eighty-nine, which is owned by Gerald Peters and part of Sheedy's third addition. So you got about eighty acres in this watershed that's gonna be going out that culvert. When you get that, uh, inch of rain, take a milk jug, about six tenths of a gallon of milk per square foot, per the square foot, that's about how much that water that puts out. When you build the buildings and you build lots on it, you only get about seventy-five percent of acre, of water holding where it can go in, your roads, so on, so forth. That increases that what you have viable for drainage, that land needs to soak up one point two gallons of water per acre. So when you get, like I say, um, uh, eighty acres there and you got two million gallons of water, Chief Bertler would like that to put out a fire, I'm sure. But unfortunately, this is all stormwater. We gotta, they, all I'm saying is, is before this is completely approved, let's get some retention ponds, let's get this figured out. Because in all in end, this water manures through a subdivision that I built years ago, crosses Anston, West Line Road, crosses the south end of my field, eventually it ends up down here in the bay. But we, I don't need any more water coming down and, and than what we do. So what I'm saying is, is let's get a storm plan developed, because the last thing people want is one, is wet basements and two, wet yards. So if it means they gotta lose a lot or two, well, let's get it done appropriately so that down the road, it, it's all done accordingly. That's my comments and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, good evening. Steve Beeta with Veerbecker, the surveyor, the engineering firm. A couple of things, we're talking about stormwater. As Steve mentioned, we're required by law to take care of the stormwater. Standard practice in every subdivision I do, I've already pre-looked at all that stuff. I know what it's gonna do. Um, as Steve mentioned, we have to look at a wet retention pond, uh, something a little bit different, but this isn't new for us. We're required, as Steve mentioned, to manage the stormwater, so that won't be an issue. We will take care of that. That's part of the process. Every single subdivision we do, it's just part of the process. We did some soil borers already, so we do our homework before we even come to this point when we're at the preliminary plat stage. But as, uh, as also was mentioned, um, we don't do all the engineering because we don't know for sure what we have until we get past the preliminary plating status or part of the project. We don't wanna stuff a pond in somewhere where, where it doesn't work, you know, so we, we do have it pretty well figured out. We do have quite a bit in area, I'll point at this screen just because I can see it better. There's quite a bit of area back here acreage-wise that we can do all kinds of stormwater management. We have many, several acres there that we can do things with. We have many, several acres there that we can do things with, so we're pretty confident we'll be able to manage that in that area. And then secondly, you're talking about, um, Anston Road itself and the access to Anston Road itself. Not only did your two experts look at this road, so did we. We went out and I measured it per all the DOT standards, we meet all those requirements for site distance. I, I handed out, um, Andrew?
Alex.
Sorry, Alex, sorry, Alex. I handed Alex one of my topo maps, um, but the, the site distances, uh, we obviously went and measured all that, both, going both ways over the top of this hill to make sure that we had proper site distance, number one, to have our access point come out. Number two, so that no driveways could come out in that, uh, in that area we do, where we don't have site access. So from Anston Road, from the center of, uh, from the center of West Line Road, as you would go east going up the hill, our, our intersection's about seven hundred and ten feet from Anston Road, or from West Line Road going east, seven hundred and ten feet. That's another two hundred and sixty feet before you get to the start of where you, you don't have site distance. So there's quite a long stretch there where we have proper site distance per the DOT standards for that speed limit on that road. So not only did they measure it before I even submitted this plat, I measured it because it was a concern of ours before we even submit this document to make sure we can see, um, uh, that correct distance and don't have any issues with traffic. Unfortunately, they don't have, uh, snow on the roads in their brochure to tell us how to, how to measure that. Most of us have been in the ditch once or twice, and yeah, it's a problem, but they don't, they don't take that into account necessarily when they look at that. So I don't know if you have any questions for me, but, um, we have looked at all these things, all you're talking about, and made sure that we can comply with all those before we brought it forward to you.
And just for the board's edification and the audience, getting preliminary plat approval does not mean you can go out and start building it. You need to come back with a final plat that will show where your stormwater management's gonna occur, correct?
Correct. Yeah, so this is just one step in the process. Yeah, once we get past the preliminary plat part of it, this is also at Brown County right now under review. And so we, yeah, once we get through this part, um, and we figure out we do need to drop a lot or two if that has to happen, or we need to modify the sizes of these lots to make sure we can get our adequate stormwater management, that happens between the preliminary and final. So as long as we're in substantial compliance, when we leave the preliminary plat and come back with our final plat, typically that's not an issue because, um, we all know that we have to look at all those factors when it comes to the stormwater part of it and make sure we comply.
So there'd be one more look for the board on this, obviously with the stormwater plan?
Yeah.
And public works.
Correct. Yeah, you're gonna get a full review by your public works and their engineer, so, uh, and my engineers, so it gets looked at well. So my only thought, or my suggestion is, I know you have six conditions on the request of preliminary plat approval, but I am asking that you drop item number six because I believe it's been studied to death, I already know that it works. It meets all the DOT requirements, and there should be no reason that, that, that your, whatever the safety committee has to look at it, I don't feel.
Which requirement did you wanna drop?
Item number six, I believe, was to send it, refer to your public and welfare committee?
It's actually already dropped out of your recommended motion.
Yep, it's already out.
It's already dropped out, okay. Okay, any other questions for me?
None?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else with a comment? Please do.
I'm Rita Clubertans, thirty-six eighty-six Anston Road. And I had mentioned before, before you how hard it is for us to get in and out of our driveway. Because we're right on that hill coming, you know, up it, and traffic does not follow thirty-five miles per hour. They're going forty-five, fifty, if not faster than that at times. It's terrible. Number one I wanna ask is, if you monitored the road, did you check to see how much traffic that is really going on that road? It's, it's, it's bad right now. It's very, very fast, and there's a lot of cars that are going. Steve, the other day, his is up on top of the hill, I saw him try to back his trailer into his driveway. He had to stop because a car came flying over the hill, and he had to go the other way with it. So, I mean, it's very dangerous, that road is. Another thing I wanna ask is, um, septic tanks. I mean, you're putting in fifty-six homes, there's another set that's over there, and our homes have wells and septics too. How can all this land take all this, I mean, without contaminating our wells? And with our wells already set, how much more are we gonna have to dig ours down further? And that's another one of my concerns. 'Cause that's an awful lot of houses, and I think it's sad.
So septic is under review by Brown County?
Well, the septic, each lot would be approved.
Approved.
Would have to have a perccable area within the lot, yes, that'll get submitted to Brown County.
And water? Same?
That doesn't get reviewed?
No water review. So let, let me just ask you just a general question, when we're putting in, and this is, this is, when we're putting in subdivisions like this, or we're authorizing subdivisions of this, like this, of this nature, what, what are the tests that we go through to make sure that there is gonna be adequate water? Anybody?
No, there's no hydrology study done on any aquifer or anything like that prior to wells going in, uh, private wells going in, I should say.
And there is no concern then?
Not to my knowledge. I would feel like if there was concern, the D and I would be in here already years ago saying that there would be limitations on stuff, and that's never been a consideration. And I know that our groundwater levels are very high here from our municipal wells, you know, we have no shortage of water. It's increased substantially after all the other municipalities in Brown County have went to lake water versus groundwater. Our levels have increased, if anything.
So there are some assurances, I mean, there, there, there's assurances in terms of, you know, when we look at the, the number of homes in Brown County that are on municipal water drawn from the lake versus well water, that's been reduced. And we also have the, the Department of Natural Resources, which watches over, we are very heavily restricted in this community by, by decisions by the Department of Natural Resources, so I do believe that if there had been an issue here, they would've been all over us.
I think you do, Steve, do you have to get permitted from the DNR for a private well yet, right?
Yeah, the well driller might have to.
Somebody has to record.
They have to record it and register it.
They must have a permitting and a recording process with the DNR, they're all recorded, I know that. Whether there's a limitation set, that I don't know. But I would feel just like wastewater, you know, we're limited on our wastewater capacity here in the village for our public wastewater, that if there was a aquifer or demand concern from a private well aspect, we would have been, had discussions with the DNR by now. And there's development going on all over, um, to the north of us here with a lot of private wells, and there's zero concern for any of that as well.
You know, and the bigger, I mean, the, well, let's, okay, that's good. Uh, other comments, any other comments or questions? No? Anyone else who hasn't spoken who wishes to speak? All right, let's look at what's in front of us then. What's in front of us is a motion to approve or deny the preliminary plat of the Sheedy Farms Fourth Edition on parcels SU six eight seven, SU six eight eight six, SU three one four eight, SU three one four nine, SU three one five five, SU three one five six, with the conditions, one, approval of stormwater, make sure I get this right, approval of stormwater management, and approval of developer's agreement for roads and stormwater management facilities, payment of the administrative fee of two hundred dollars per lot, a note on the face of the plat, no driveway access to Anston Road for lots seventy-one through seventy-six, and number five, meeting all other requirements of all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies. That's what I, in front of us right now for a motion to approve or deny. Is there anyone who would like to offer a motion? Okay, um, I will go ahead and offer a motion to approve the preliminary plat of the Sheedy Farms Fourth Edition on the parcels as stated with the six conditions as stated, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from trustee Neto. Any further questions, comments, or discussion?
Can I get clarification, you are saying the six is out?
I'm sorry, five, there, there was one eliminated, there are five conditions.
And, uh, on the second, the same understanding that it's five? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the correction. So we have a motion on the floor to approve, as stated, with the five conditions as corrected. That motion was made by myself, um, and that was seconded by trustee Neto. Any other further questions or discussion on this?
I just have one thing to say. The reason I was curious on the elevation was more along the lines of the hazard of actually turning into that is, 'cause for me, in winter driving, we always experience some level of hazard. And what happens is if you have a big slope, then you can lose that control once you've made the turn. But since that's so flat, I'm not concerned about that. I think that flat area there gives a person opportunity to come up comfortably to a stop, and then they just have to be careful, like we all do, when they turn out into that Anson Road. And vice versa, if it's slippery, it's winter conditions, just be careful as you're driving and making that turn, just like we all are trying to be careful in winter driving.
So there is a motion on the floor to approve this item, um, as stated, and that motion has been seconded. No other further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, and thank you all for the discussion and input. Okay, um, moving on, we are off to item number eight B. Eight B is a public hearing, a request from Dennis and Cornelia Corpan, Denkord Comm LLC, requesting approval of a rezone of parcel SU three two one dash two from business to neighborhood business and a conditional use for a residential unit on the property located six hundred and fifty feet west of Reforestation Camp Road.
I think we've already moved through that one, sir. I think we're on C.
Uh, I think we're on B, aren't we, the public hearing?
Yep.
You're on B?
Yep.
That's why you're in charge.
Zoning Administrator Dunks.
Just glad you're watching over me. Time of the best.
Yes, we are looking at just over a one-acre parcel here, it is zoned business, um, with some rural residential and business with a PDD surrounding it with single-family homes and commercial uses. The main building is a two-unit building with the Posie Patch Retreat in the rear portion and a store front up in the front portion. The detached garage on the same parcel was part of the vehicle sales business that was also using this property. All aspects of that business have been relocated to a different site. The owner would like to convert that building into an additional dwelling unit. A site plan was approved on the property which allowed for used car sales. Neighborhood business, which they're asking to rezone to, would not allow for vehicle sales. Staff would recommend the discontinuance of that vehicle sales as part of any conditional use approval. Verification from Brown County zoning that the septic system will support the additional regi, residential unit will be required prior to issuance of any permits for the conversion of the garage into a dwelling unit. The rezone is being requested because the business zoning would not allow for that conditional use for that residential unit. Neighborhood business does allow for a residential unit as part of conditional use approval. The existing uses in the building would not be affected by this rezone. Your motion by Planning and Zoning Commission was to recommend approval of both the rezone and the conditional use, with the condit, conditional use having four conditions, all vehicle sales and/or service will be discontinued. Verification by Brown County that that septic system will support the additional residential unit or what modifications would be required to it prior to the conversion from the garage to a dwelling unit, and approval of the rezone from business to neighborhood business, along with meeting all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies. Thank you.
Is that a full-time residence, or is it like an Airbnb, or what's it gonna be?
It's gonna be a residential unit. We, if they chose to do Airbnb, it's no different than a regular residential unit. My anticipation, the discussion that I've had with, with Mr. Corpan was, it's time for them to downsize, and, and they are thinking about moving onto that site themselves. There's nothing in this that would require that. It's no different than any other residential unit, we, we can't govern use or ownership of a residential unit. They choose to live in it, or rent it out, or Airbnb it, it's all within proper means. We, we can't tell them that they can't do something.
Are there other questions for zoning administrator Dunks on this item? This is a public hearing, so anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and provide your name and address and speak on this item, this is your opportunity. Come forward and speak on this item now. Welcome.
Name is Lee Rentmeister, I live at twenty-eight thirty-three Elmwood Road, which is directly behind this. My big question is, what is the plan with all this? I mean, this is a multi-unit thing, meaning three families can live there?
No. The, the, the main building is commercial use. They're just asking for a residential unit in the rear. The single, the garage that's standing there right now.
'Cause I'm concerned with that whole area from the church all the way down to first resi, residential house on there. What's gonna happen with that? Are they gonna try to make condos or apartment buildings there, is this a step towards it?
Well, they, these individuals don't own enough land there to, to try and make any additional apartments to the, to the west.
Yeah, but the farm shop is right next to that, and which...
We have no idea what she's planning to do with her property.
That's been sitting there, I mean...
It, it, at this point, it would be difficult to do apartment complexes in there because you don't have the sewer.
Yeah, but they can bring it down to, uh, down to B.
Millions.
No.
Good.
No. If we bring it down to B, we're bringing it to your house. It's not even in the future to have sewer, it's, it's to remain rural through the life of our company.
That's been a big concern of that whole area for over twenty-five years, what's going on, and what's going on with B on both sides. Since then, you had more houses developed on B, you know, that's the only area in that with some small business-type stuff, you know, the church and stuff. Yep.
I wouldn't, I would not expect to ever see any approval from multifamily in that section of County B.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, what's the, uh...
It's gonna stay east of the tracks.
Future plan with Swamaco, with the land around there, 'cause like I said, that's, with the zoo down there, that's a tr, attractive area for some kind of business, but you got a lot of houses in there right across the street from that. You got a, a farm field yet, and you got Blazer's Anchors just down the, the way too, which is farm field. So I'm, I'm more concerned, where, where are you leading with this land?
We're not leading anybody anywhere right now.
Well, the, you know, what the future plan would be, is this, you know, stepping stone towards something like that, or...
No.
And if it's gonna be a single family in there with three units, or is it gonna be, you know...
No, it's a single-family unit in that detached garage.
Yeah, what do I have with the rest of the building?
It's commercial use.
'Cause I understand from other people that people have been living in there.
They're not living in there, it's a, it's a scrapbooking retreat.
Yeah. Are they looking to have retreats overnight with people?
Well, they do have retreats overnight with people. It's, it's like a hotel.
That is okayed by the...
Yes, they have all the approvals for that. It's like a hotel.
That's been in place for how many years?
Yes, they're approved.
I don't pay enough attention to...
But they're, they're not, it's approved for, I believe, one renter at a time.
Okay.
I believe.
How far are we zoned commercial down there? So how far does that commercial zoning go to the farm?
The farm shops are zoned commercial, then I believe the next house to the west is residential.
Yes.
Okay, so you're really looking from...
And that's a relatively new home, so I... I'm not gonna see it. But I wouldn't anticipate, I mean, you're gonna get some commercial, I mean, the people across the street, there's on the highway business too, or some type of business, I believe. Or am I too far west already, or east? McNeil's Place, where is that? No, we're still west of that, or east, we're west of McNeil's, so... That would be the other place they had, where the ice cream shop is across the street from that, is zoned commercial. Most of your commercial development on B is in the sewer service area, so around the school and heading towards Velp Avenue. The future land use plan does show mixed-use development in there. I don't know about how far this way.
It would be very costly to try to get sewer past that area. I mean, it's, too costly.
It's not in our 20-year plan. It's in an area designed to never be served by sewer right now. Could that change? Yes, it could.
That's good, I'll probably be dead in 20 years.
Don't say that now. Leave that for somebody else.
I can't publicly say that.
Does that answer your questions on there? I just, I just don't think, the development that you're talking about, multifamily dwelling, there probably, you know, the camp is an important spot, right? It brings in a lot of people. I could see there being attractive business opportunities for commercial businesses.
I know something's gonna happen in that area.
In, yeah, in those corridors.
Been checked at for 25 years now on what to do. I mean, originally, that corner where the church was, they were looking at a strip mall or something there.
Yeah. You know, I don't, I don't see the, I don't see the living that you're talking about, multifamily. If there's gonna be any multifamily, there's a lot of different hurdles to jump through when we're talking about multifamily.
There'd be better places for it.
Much better places.
In that area that's peppered with homes and everything.
Right.
This doesn't really affect me, I'm not directly behind it, but it's still a concern of what's going to happen in that area.
Your biggest problem is gonna be bike riders on Elmwood. Because you got a lot of them.
Well, yeah, there's bike clubs that come down there with 30, 40 bikes.
Mm-hmm.
That's not a problem.
I told him, they're fast, I'm slow. It's not me.
Oh, you're in that second group, huh?
Yeah, oh, yeah. If not the third.
All right. Anything else?
No, I guess that's it. I just wanted to see if there was any...
No, I appreciate the input, that helps us all get grounded to what is going on out there. All right, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Public hearing is still open. Anyone else care to come forward and speak on this item? No?
Okay, so let's close the public hearing, and let's move on to item C, which is Ordinance 2025-4, a rezone of parcel SU 321-2 from business to neighborhood business. Zoning Administrator Dunks.
Yes, this is being done basically to allow for that conditional use. And if you, really, if you don't believe you're gonna approve the conditional use, I wouldn't approve the rezone, but they kinda go hand in hand, but we gotta take separate steps on them. Because they don't want to see the rezone if the conditional use isn't gonna be approved.
So, does anyone see an issue with the ordinance rezone?
No.
No? Is there anyone who would like to make a motion on the ordinance rezone? I can offer a motion. I would offer a motion to approve the ordinance, Ordinance 2025-4 rezoning parcel SU 321-2 from business to neighborhood business. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Trustee Andrews this evening. Any other further questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Absolutely. Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee McKeefry.
Aye.
Trustee Neto.
Aye.
Trustee Romes.
Aye.
Trustee Stevens.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
President Fenrazza.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, seven to zero.
All right, so let's move on to Chapter Three in our trilogy. Tonight, Chapter Three consists of a conditional use application for a residential unit on SU 321-2. Zoning Administrator Dunks.
Yes, as discussed, but you can remove condition number three because it has already happened. So we're just looking for that residential unit.
All right, anyone care to offer a motion on this one?
I'll do it. I'll offer a motion to approve conditional use, allowing for residential unit on parcel SU 321-2 with the following conditions. One, all vehicle sales and/or service will be discontinued. Two, verification from Brown County zoning that the septic system will support the additional residential unit will be required prior to any permits for the conversion of the garage to a dwelling unit. Three, approval of a rezone from business to neighborhood business, which I believe we already did, and four, meet the requirements for all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies.
Thank you. Trustee McKeefry has offered a motion to approve the conditional use application with the conditions as stated, and that has been seconded by Trustee Romes. Any other further questions or discussion? All right, this is not a roll call, so we can do this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right, thank you. Trustee Romes.
Yes.
Discussion on future agenda items?
Was it?
Usually get your five minutes.
No, it's not on the list, so...
It's not on the list, so you don't get your five minutes?
It's not on the agenda.
Is there a discussion on any other items that you'd like to bring up?
No, not today. I think we've, it's been a long time. Unless someone wants me to speak for five minutes, if you do say aye.
No, thank you.
I would like to suggest that we talk about proactive communication. We've got multiple things in this village that are changing. We've got, we're making investments in wells and towers, which are gonna affect utility rates. We just sat through an assessment conversation that's gonna change potentially people's taxes. I think we should be looking at alternatives when it comes to proactive communication, whether it be through our website or any other types of means, so that we can stay in front of this with these types of changes. So I'd like to propose we have an open discussion about what those strategies might look like.
Okay, can we get that on the next agenda? Proactive communication strategies?
Mm-hmm.
Everybody do your research, come with your suggestions. Perfect. Any, anyone else, other items?
The only other, just as a reminder, the Planning and Zoning Group will be meeting next Monday, and we will be putting in your in-baskets some recommendations, so you can study those before our following meeting. So we'll have those available. We will have those recommendations, the PowerPoint presentation, potential proposed zoning change, and any other documentation that we put together after next Monday.
Terrific.
Good.
All right, with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Trustee Andrews has offered a motion to adjourn the evening's meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Trustee McKeefry. Anyone else with comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of adjourned the evening's meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.